Welcome to the Davie County Planning Board meeting for the month of May 2021, which is now called to order. First order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, if there's no further comments, all in favor of approving the minutes, raise your right hand. Okay, two nanos. All right, at this time, we will accept any public comments regarding anything you have on your mind that is not on the agenda for today, which is the rezoning of the property there at Farmington Road. All right, seeing none, no public comments. Mr. Meadwell, would you like to present the rezoning?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Mr. White get down, get situated. Mr. Chairman, before you do that, you have zoning map amendment 2021-02. This is a request by Wells Fargo Bank to rezone approximately 159 acres of a 201-acre parcel from residential 20, quality design overlay and highway business quality design overlay to GI, general industrial quality design overlay. The subject property is located at 2777 US Highway 158 and is further described as the northern portion of Davie County tax map, F553. If you look in your agenda packages, you will see an attached zoning map, which does designate the property as R20. However, you will see the small portion, little square portion of the property there on 158 that is on highway commercial. These were established in 1973 when zoning was established for the county. So it's just always been there. There hasn't ever been another rezoning request on all of this piece of property. As I had mentioned in your package, you do see the zoning map, the attached zoning map. If you look at some of the surrounding properties, a big part of it is zoned R20. However, those properties to the west, there's a track that this board or the Board of Commissioners did approve for an industrial zoning classification just several months ago. You do have a commercially zoned property, but just north of 40, you are probably the, you have Vulcan Materials, which is I-4 conditional disc or highway industrial or heavy industrial conditional districts, as well as other GI and highway business zone properties. The current use of the piece of property right now, there is a resonance on the track, but for the most part, it is used currently for farming type purposes. This track, going back for some time, has been shown on our land use maps as a potential industrial site. This was showed up on the, our 2000 comprehensive plan or 2003 comprehensive plan or 2005, as well as our current comprehensive plan identifying the area to be industrial. Also, the map shows that according to our growth enhancement strategy map, this area is shown as a primary growth area. And, you know, I know some of you board members participated with the development of our comprehensive plan and were part of that subcommittee group that really discussed what needed to happen in terms of this area around Farmington Road, along Farmington Road, all the way to 801. And the intent was that this was or identified as a primary growth area. We knew that this was going to happen, just based on the issues or the facts that, you know, the infrastructure was there, that it met the criteria that the board and the committee identified as that this being a potential industrial site. As I mentioned, our current plan identifies it as industrial. It's a primary growth area on our growth strategy plan. And there are other statements or documents or policies and goals that identify why this track should be looked at as an industrial site. Now, I will say that a portion of the property there along Cedar Creek, you do have some floodplain areas right there. So obviously, you know, those areas are less desirable or would be able to be developed for industrial purposes, but, you know, there are protections in place for that. So, but, you know, it's just a smaller area that is actually on this piece that includes that floodplain type area right there. Public water and sewer capacity is available with this, to this piece of property. If many of you seen, there is a, there where the government center is now, there is an access road coming off of Farmington Road to serve this piece of property. This was a requirement of Department of Transportation. When they met for the driveway permit for that site, that it would be extended in there. But the track also does have road fronters there on US Highway 58 this way. Issues to consider, this comes to the board as a general use rezoning. So all those uses that would be allowed in the general industrial type district should be considered with that. Also, the board should consider, you know, the property's location to other commercial and industrial uses around the I-40 interchange, the property's potential as a commercial or industrial development site, the property's potential as an agricultural and a residential site. And whether the reclassification is consistent with the purposes and goals, objectives and policies of the adopted plans for the area, and whether the reclassification is consistent with the overall character of existing development in the area. So the board should consider, one, the following actions. Either one, move the following statement to adopt in support of a motion to approve the rezoning. Two, move the following statement to adopt in support of a motion to deny. Or three, defer for additional considerations. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you and answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you. Before we call for any speakers, does any board member have any questions for Mr. Meadwell or any discussion amongst ourselves first? Okay, I would invite the applicant to come forward and speak first, if you'd like to do that.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Luke Dickey with Stimmel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Good to see you this afternoon. We are working with the Wells Fargo, who's the owner or the trustee of the property, as well as Mr. Brawley with the EDC, looking at how we could rezon this for the industrial use as requested. So basically, the presentation that was given by Andrew basically covered everything that we have here to talk about. It is a general use, so that's what we're talking about today. The comprehensive plan has identified this tract as an industrial development. That's going back to the 2005 and the 2019 plans. I believe it even goes a little bit further back from that from a published standpoint. This is an unusual tract. In fact, it is a nice, large tract with a single owner. It's at a great location in terms of transportation and access to 40 and to 158. Water and sewer is available to the site with a small extension, and anything that this site would serve would need a pump station on the eastern portion to get back up into the gravity feed to the next pump station further on down the site at the government center there. But again, sewer and water is available. The quality overlay district, as Andrew had mentioned, does apply this, so that has the protections along 158 for buffering, for parking, and then how we address the streetscape. As mentioned, the eastern portion of the site does have an actual buffer with the wetlands and the floodplain associated with that. That is roughly 36 acres of the site that is along there. So that gets a nice sized buffer in there because we will not develop within the floodplain from that standpoint. And also, we don't want to impact wetlands as much as possible. And this also falls within, of course, the newly adopted GI district. We did have a neighborhood outreach meeting at that time. You know, we discussed with the neighbors of the I-3 district. This was before the amendment to adopt the GI. So there was concerns mentioned in kind of what the uses that were within that I-3 district. I think that's now been addressed with this GI district, removing some of those heavier industrial uses that was in the I-3. We had 16 property owners attend that meeting, which we held at the Davie Middle School and their gymnasium. We also had six phone calls from neighbors who could not attend that, just with questions. And in the end, it was about probably a 60/40 split of those, 60% of those that attended were not in favor of the industrial, like to see it remain as is or as a mixed use type development. So that was 22 total out of about 180 invitations that went out that we had, the outreach from the neighbors. But we're here to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave there, does anyone have any specific questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this may come forward. I don't see many folks here, but as you come forward, just please state your name and your address and try to keep it under three minutes, please.
I think we can do that. William Vaughn, 158 Eagles Landing Lane. Good afternoon. I'm here to speak against the proposed rezoning of the 159-acre parcel along US 158 in the Farmington District. This proposed rezoning is contrary to all good planning principles, and that it will place a non-compatible use directly in the center of an area which has been designated as a growth area for residential and agricultural uses. In terms of good planning, due to placement in the county, access to transportation corridors, proximity to government and education facilities, and the potential for control yet desired residential expansion of the type which will improve quality of life and property values in the county, the current designation residential and R20, et cetera, and RA is correct. Speaking from over 40 years of experience in public works, I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina and Virginia, and I have experience as a master planner on the third largest army training facility as a deputy for construction and $1 billion of BRAC construction on that facility. I've been a joint task force engineer, I master plan the Guantanamo Detention Facility and the $16 million migrant operations facility, and recently, as a county engineer for Western Virginia County, I have been intimately involved in the development of the county comprehensive plans. So I can say with some level of expertise that the current planning documents, with the exception of the future use map, page 75 on your comp plan, is not congruent with the remainder of the plan, which seems to be well-developed. That's the 205, I guess, the historic zoning that you mentioned just a few minutes ago that should carry through. Regarding this action, the continued zoning of this area complies with your rural lot subdivision and growth management strategy and the concepts of mixed use development. Industrial zoning does not. Therefore, the statement in the previous meeting's minutes package that the property is an area designated as industrial is incorrect, considering the information available in the packet and the current zoning map in the comp plan. They don't match. At the very end, you throw in that light lavender designation, the color, and say industrial. Well, okay, fine. But even as your own website is indicating that the below documents, and these are things that we looked at when we moved here, represent the comp plan of 2 December 2019, the area is still shown as industrial, residential, agricultural. This is important since much private residential investment has incurred in the last two years in this location. Potential buyers check two things before investing in housing, the zoning map and the school ratings. Just ask my wife, she'll tell you. The school ratings in this area and the zoning maps say, "Come live here." $3 million worth of homes have recently been built in the Eagles Landing subdivision, and another $2 million are being ready to break ground and be construction. That's almost $6 to $10 million worth of housing. If you plat it, contrary to the future use plan on page 75 of the comp plan, you designated that industrial area along that area, you plat it and allowed to be built Eagles Landing subdivision. If you look on the map, it's that little hooker road right there, and you've got it in that light lavender section. You, Ms. Grubbs, I see you understand what I'm talking about. That is the catalyst for the residential expansion in this area, in this corridor. If you intended to change the zoning to meet future map on 25, even as short as three years ago, when the plat was approved, you should have denied the plat. People have invested their life savings in this area by that plat. By this one action alone, you have placed in motion your intent to expand the area as a residential expansion area. The future use map in the comp plan needs to be corrected. With regard to this acreage, now that you have set the residential use condition in motion, the best use would be to enhance the area with such uses as like commercial, which will complement the new government center, and I congratulate you on repurposing the furniture store. That was excellent, because usually things like that become my source. Very good. And other residential use types. This area is of such a size that a walking community could be planned, senior retirement housing, some multi-useous townhouses, homes in the 200,000 to 300,000 price point range by young families attainable and retirees. The utilities he mentioned make all that possible because if you make it a little bit tighter for that type use. A doctor's office, dentist's office, other professional office spaces such as lawyers, architects, engineers, which would now be located in the county, instead of having to come here from places like Winston-Salem, Greensboro, and Charlotte. You want the professionals to move here. Providing at-home professional services and a few acres for community recreation. I think you get the point. That is a good use for that nearly 200 acres, the whole thing. This type of use enhances the zoning as it exists now and provides a quality community in the entire corridor, but not if this rezoning is approved. The action is contrary to your very own policies, 3.1, 3.6, and 4.6. Current rumor is a potential use of this site is for a plastic manufacturing facility, true or not, but I'll give you some details on that. As a civil engineer versed in transportation and environmental design, I can tell you that the supply logistics train for such an industry is tremendous and is best suited for a location with rail spur access, which this does not have. In lieu of rail tanker cars bringing in the raw materials, I can think Lane Industries in West County, Virginia, as well as the Gatorade plant, the logistics chain would have to be replaced by a constant stream of tanker trucks. That material has to come from somewhere, and it has to get there. Only way to get in there if you don't have rail, bring it in in the tanker truck, all day long, all night long, back and forth. I will enumerate, I will not enumerate the numerous environmental effects at this time, but I could go on for probably an hour on that. In short, this proposal does not meet with the heretofore plan of providing quality residential expansion. It's an expansion area. It doesn't mean exclusively, it can't be for housing, it's a growth expansion area, right? It's not consistent with the overall demographics of the Farmington District. You want to start driving all the district property values down? Do this, because when the houses start to sell and people can't get money because of the industrial site, the real estate agent right there will tell you that will be reflected in everybody else's point price. And they will only serve to depress property values and forever eliminate any potential future residential expansion and the concomitant revenue stream from such. You want your quick ratio to go down? You want your goods and services to be impacted from your tax revenues? It'll happen. So then you'll only be able to pay your retirements and your welfare and your medical and all that, because you won't have money for anything else, because you don't have any revenue stream. Do you really want the impression that due to the exit 174 and I-40 view shed, because some of the things on that list can be as much as 60 feet tall, according to your own standards, that Davie County, as people drive by, will think this looks like a factory town? And that's what people will say when they drive by and see it. That is what a drive-by impression will be. Or do you want this area to be a county to be the envy of the region? If planned correctly, you can. Other industrial areas already exist in the county. This should not be one. You've already set your feet on that path by allowing houses to be platted in that area, that corridor. The current plan makes an area want to go to and live in alternative to the nearby regional housing markets. It fits with your vision of rural lot subdivisions. In short, this proposed zoning is not in the public interest, is incompatible with the surrounding residential use, which you had now inculcated with the plating of Eagles Landing. And it is not protect, enhance, or encourage a high quality of life for the current and any future residency area. Those are your words from your resolution, right out of it. I thank you for your attention to this issue, and I will respectfully submit. And for your record and any minute preparations, I have a copy for the clerk, which is where.
Thank you. While that was way over three minutes, I do appreciate you moving right on through it and getting to the point. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. My name's Terry Brawley. I do economic development here in the county. Thank you for your service to our community. We brought Stellon Associates together here with us to partner. They're really renowned in terms of land use planners, landscape architects. If you look at exit 180 and you look at that campus for the medical facility, they designed that. If you look at Kinderton Development, they designed that. If you look at downtown Winston at Bailey Park, they designed that. They helped many other projects, High Point University. But we brought them to the table because we really want that to be a prominent place. Our job is to grow the tax base and to create jobs in the community. Many of you probably know this, but you might not know, less than 1% of the landmass in Davie County is zoned industrial. Our industrial parks in Moxville are filling up. Today's world requires industry to have land that's properly zoned, but not only properly zoned, they typically need a building in place. I had two appointments this morning that I showed our industrial park in Moxville to. Those companies need to be out the door with product within six months. This is a prominent piece of property. I have shown it for decades. As a matter of fact, Gil Dan almost went to that site because of its proximity. It's located on the North Main Street of North Carolina, I-40, with all the utilities in place. It's a prominent site for us. It's been listed on our website for decades. The state of North Carolina knows this site. So we're here in support of that because we would like to see that develop. We have a developer. There are no known customers at this time, so everything's on speculation. So a plastic company, we don't know a thing about. I don't know of a single industry that's looking at that site right now, but would thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I echo my appreciation for your public service. I'll be brief. However, my life has not been brief, because I started by saying for 54 years, I have driven by this property that many call the Wachovia Tract, which is now in trust with Wells Fargo. It lies on one of the strongest business arteries in the state, Interstate 40, which garners east-west traffic in the neighborhood of 42,000 cars daily. And as you know, its southern boundary lies on Highway 158, which is the gateway to Forsyth County for many of our citizens here in Davie County. Since being in real estate, starting back in 1991, I have heard this tract called the industrial gem of Davie County. It's been eyed by buyers since the 70s and is considered one of Davie County's greatest potential assets. When our county appointed a blue ribbon committee to address the future land uses of the county, a comprehensive plan used, as you know, was created. This plan referred to this area as growth area, citing in Section 2, Page 71. On page 70, it is quoted as saying, "Growth strategy map which identifies area of the county that are ready for development and those areas that may need infrastructure improvement ready for development." The heading "Future Land Use" identifies projected land use needs to accommodate future growth. The map identifies the Wells Fargo site as future growth area. Interestingly enough, on page 75, which was mentioned earlier, the map refers to future land use highlighted in purple, notating its future use as industrial use. Today, Davie County continues to be poised as a strong, growing economic county. We are able to look backward at the path that has been blazed in this county, and we stand today at a crossroad, looking at the next 25 years. The economy is ripe. The developer that has chosen this has tremendous development history in the Winston-Salem, Raleigh, and our coastal region. Even in Davie County, you can see the fabric of his work at locations like The Sheets, in Front of Lowe's, Advance Auto, or in Winston-Salem on Stratford Road, the Hanes brand property, where you probably have eaten at PF Chang's or maybe visited Walmart in the past. He is currently working on a similar industrial plan in another community in our state. Ladies and gentlemen, this comprehensive plan was spot on, and now it's up to you to begin the march towards jobs and good, sound development for Davie County. On behalf of Wells Fargo and as a broker of 30 years in this marketplace, I stand in support of this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Gifford, and I live at 149 Eagles Landing Lane. My children went to Davie High and graduated from Davie High. We lived in Davie County for about 14 years, and then we sold our house. We moved to Forsyth County after they graduated, and we were empty nesters. Well, it took us about a year and a half, and we were like, "Let's go back to Davie County." And I was so excited also when the high school was voted on and was built. And I'm also a real estate agent, so I said to my husband, "Let's go back. The area is growing. I'm very excited about it and excited for our children." And I think that, and I understand why this commercial project is being requested, Highway 158, Highway 40, utilities, but I think it's a horrible idea. We have Pine Brook Elementary. We have North Davie, and we have Davie High. We have children that are getting their permits, that are learning to drive, my children did. I see them all the time come up our road and turn around, and I just smile because it brings back those memories. They want to put an industrial I-3 site in there where you're going to have truckers in and out, and you're going to have children driving, getting their permits, school buses. You've got games, you've got sports, you've got training where they go for, you know, their practice and game night. And in the midst of all of that wonderful activity, you're sticking an I-3 site. Now, these gentlemen talk about Kinderton Plaza. Well, a business plaza would be beautiful there, maybe. Well, a business plaza would be beautiful there, maybe sports medicine, maybe a place where people could go get their sandwiches before the game. But having semi-trucks and trucking in and out of the corridor with three schools and beautiful communities like ours coming in and stunting the growth from Clemmons to Advance to Moxville, I mean, these, these companies need to be on the other side where we already have industrial going on, but not stunning the growth coming this direction and in the midst of our children. I am totally against it. We did go out and get other signatures, and I would like to submit those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to offer a comment, we will close the public comment And it means it's time for us to discuss, bring up any questions, make a motion.
Andrew, I have a question. On 158, is there, is there access off of that road? I mean, will they have access off of that, or does it all have to come off of Farmington?
So any access to the site will have to be approved by NCDO2. When, we have had multiple discussions with the Department of Transportation. They are aware that something potential is going to happen here, didn't know exactly what, but any request would have to go before them first. So I would think that they would have at least one access off of 158 with another access off of Farmington Road, but there again, based on what the department will require them, even as far as a TI or traffic impact analysis could be done, and any of those additional improvements that would be required, that's really going to be up to NCDO2 on those number of access points.
Just based on the maps that we have at our disposal regarding future use, primary growth, the location of the property, this piece of property checks all the boxes. There is no other piece of property that I know of that is so perfect for this type of development. Even the property that Mr. Brawley spoke of in Moxville, when that was rezoned, it didn't have infrastructure, and it was rezoned to be an industrial piece of property. So they had to actually put in infrastructure to get that property, you know, up and running. This piece of property already has everything. It's all there. There's ready to be built on for the most part. So I think it's a great thing for the county. We've got to increase our tax base. You know, personally, I don't think we need more 300,000 and 400,000 dollar houses. We need more affordable housing. And we have people who are working in Davie County, but they can't afford to live here. So we need to increase the, the jobs available here, but we also have got to provide affordable housing for those folks that are going to be working here. Get them into our county, make them a part of our county so they have a vested interest.
Ready to hear a motion if there's no other comments. We can still discuss after the motion.
Well, based on my comments, I move to approve this rezoning. And I will read, if I can find it. I think I got it. You got it handed? I've got my paper straightened. I mean, that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve the amendment that promotes, the amendment promotes public health, safety, and general welfare, is consistent with all applicable adopted plans, and considers the, and I consider the action reasonable and in the public interest. That said approval furthers the goals, objectives, actions, and maps and policies of the comprehensive plan and growth enhancement strategy because it is in harmony with the surrounding area and uses and fits with the county's future land use plans as it is designated industrial on the comprehensive plan map and as a primary growth area on the growth enhancement strategy map, and is in the vicinity of commercially and industrial zone property, and infrastructure is already in place, including water and sewer.
I'll say. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I would like to add, and I agree with pretty much everything Wendy said. I think to the point of truck traffic, I can't think of a better place to have truck traffic within a few hundred feet of the interstate. I don't see the trucks exceeding the speed of 15 miles an hour before they get on the interstate. I couldn't imagine a safer scenario for traffic. Like I said, I agree with the, the property is poised for this type of development. I don't think of single-family houses being on an interstate corridor typically. Furthermore, it fits with our land use plan. Any other comments? All right. Call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve, raise your right hand. All right, it is unanimous. No other business come before the board? All right, that does it. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay, thank you.